Apologies for absence, please.
We have apologies, Mr Mayor, from Mr Moody, councillor Lewis, I believe from councillor Parker, and councillor Munro has indicated that he will be late.
You do have to, from councillor Parker.
We do have, thank you. My apologies, councillor Munro is also a full apology.
I think we all are aware of councillor Lewis's sad loss just recently, so perhaps just 10 seconds just to think about sheen. Good, right, thank you very much. So we move on to declarations of interest and probably just worth reminding you that if you've forgotten and you suddenly remember, please just say, but also bear in mind, of course, that this includes the contents of the Budget and Policy and DMNL minutes too. So declarations of interest, please, if any. Good, thank you. Item three, minutes of the last council meeting which was held on 24th of June. You've all seen those, are there any matters arising from those minutes, please? So I think we need to approve those, to have a proposer, please. Thank you councillor Poppy, secondor if you would, councillor Johnson, all those in favour. Thank you. We move on to item four, which unusually, we actually do have a question from the public, which is fantastic, and if I'd like, Mr Smith, please to ask his question, I think you probably have copies of this, so it was written and sent in ahead. You know how that works, Harry, don't you? Just a bit.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks to the council for receiving my question. The source of the question is a real recent experience with responses to a very serious fly tipping incident. A member of the public, not knowing who to contact, did ring Tavestock Town Council and was directed towards West Devon Borough Council as the Waste Collection Authority and as the statutory body responsible. West Devon did log the call and emailed a reference number, but several hours later, a message was left on a phone and stated that West Devon would not deal with the incident and that the contact and reporting should be done through Tavestock Town Council. As is the case, as we've all experienced, when this sort of thing arises, all present immediately get their phone out and turn on the internet to find out information, that's what always happens when these sort of situations arise. So the first search was West Devon, the search of West Devon website, and that revealed the appropriate area for reporting fly tipping. The second one that came about was a search of Tavestock Town Council's website, and that created 'no result found', that was the message, 'no result', nothing mentioned at all about. So that leaves the person who reported it in some sort of quandary really, because West Devon's got a system, but Tavestock Town Council haven't. So I raised the question, and I'm extremely grateful to the assistant to the town clerk for responding to the question in some detail and with great clarity. Reading through that and trying to digest the legislation, the first question that arises from the legislation is the obvious one, and it's key to all the later questions that might arise. The question to be considered first must be, is council-owned land categorised as private land with regard to fly tipping? If that is the case, then it's clear arrangements other than those that currently exist need to be made available to members of the public, and it needs to be a defined process so that they're not coming at you from all sorts of angles, as far as I'm concerned. Fly tipping is increasing, and there needs to be a process if that is the case. I just want to make it clear that my question is not specific, it relates to fly tipping as a subject matter and includes every aspect of it. The incident I started with and first mentioned was dealt with by the officers and staff of Tavestock Town Council in a manner which showed an extremely high level of empathy and an extremely high level of efficiency, and for that I have made public my appreciation of the town council. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs Smith. Can I just ask you while you're there though, please, just for form's sake, to actually read the question that you've submitted to us so that we can answer it in a formal way?
Yeah, I think the standing orders of the council require that I introduce myself and my address. My name is Harry Smith, and I'm a resident in Tavestock North, and the question is, will Tavestock Council enter meaningful dialogue with West Devon Borough Council to clarify the responsibility for responding to reports of fly tipping inland, on land in Tavestock?
Thank you very much for that.
I merely, I know that nothing happens at great speed when matters are dealing, when the matter's been dealt with between two councils or even through one council, but it's clear that if, to me, that if the town council are responsible for fly tipping on their land, then to be without an actual process leaves the town council, and I feel responsible still for town council, leaves the town council open to having messages and questions and reports flying in from all sorts of angles and not through a designated system. The West Devon Borough Council have that, you fill it, you fill it all in, and you get a report number, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just concerned that there may well be a problem looming.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask the town clerk, please, to respond with, well...
I can respond with the email which was sent by the assistant to the town clerk, which Mr Smith has referred to, and it goes as follows. Thank you for your email. To answer your question, fly tipping should be reported to the Waste Collection Authority, WCA, which has powers in relation to investigation of fly tipping, and then a link is provided to the West Devon Borough Council website. However, the Waste Collection Authority is only responsible for removal of fly tipping in cases where the land is designated as relevant land or relevant highway, which amongst other factors means, relevant land is land that is open to the air, notwithstanding that it is covered if it is open to the air on at least one side, but not a highway which is under direct control of a principal litter authority and to which the public are entitled or permitted to have access with or without payment. Section 86.4, that's of the Relevant Act. A local council must also ensure that any relevant highway for which it is responsible, so far as is practicable, is kept clear of litter and refuse, section 89.1a. A relevant highway is one that is maintainable at public expense but not a trunk road which is a special road. A local council is responsible for so much of the highway as falls within its area. Please note, any references above to a local council are to principal authorities, not town-parish councils. Therefore, where land does not meet those tests, such as privately owned land or highway maintainable at public expense, the responsibility for removal typically falls to the landowner or occupier as applicable. So that was the response. The short version is, every landowner, unless those specific criteria are met, is responsible for the removal of fly tipping from their own premises, whether it's the town council, whether it's something that's dumped in someone's garden or someone's farmland, the landowner has responsibilities to remove that, and that is the case for us and indeed for everybody else.
Thank you very much. Do you have your question, I don't know whether you want to make a return statement, Harry, or which we... Do you want to respond? Can we turn this into...
Mr Mayor, it's clear from that statement from the town clerk and the responsible finance officer that, a) there should be a system for reporting fly tipping to Tavestock Town Council, and I would suggest that when you're scoping exercise as responsible finance officer, normally in October, there may well be a reason to include some sort of financial allocation for that, because I fear that if the clarity is expanded to the general public, then there may well be at least a few reports during the year, and officers and staff have to be funded, as far as I'm concerned, to be able to deal with it.
Town clerk?
I think just by way of a general observation, fly tipping is a very difficult area. Now, clearly on this particular occasion, the, I mean, the person was correctly advised to go to the borough council in terms of the reporting, but because it was on town council land, the report should have been made also either to the works department or to the tenant occupying that land, so we can pick that up internally. I would be hesitant to publicise, as is being suggested, on the basis that unfortunately there are people who do take advantage of situations, and I think the last thing we want, whether it's town council land, borough council land or county council land, would be members of the public feeling that was a free waste disposal service for them. Ultimately, the responsibilities attaching to landowners are consistent. Clearly, we need to tighten up internally in terms of our communications between staff and identifying where something is on town council land, where it's on land subject to a lease or a licence, so that we know who we're actually notifying, and we should still be advising to refer on to the reporting for the investigation side of things, should the Waste Collection Authority wish to do it. But I would be hesitant for those reasons, it's not a reason not to make a financial allocation within the budget, but I'd be hesitant for those reasons because I think what we can see in some cases elsewhere is that advantage does get taken of these things, and we only have to look back to the, not quite the same, but actually we had the same outcome when we had people unlawfully enter Tavestock Town Council land, and we were required to enter into a legal process to remove them, when you look at the amount of waste that they left and the types of waste that they left, which needed to be picked up at public expense.
Thank you very much, town clerk. Now, I'm going to move on because this isn't an item that allows for debate, so we have had a question, we've had a response, and thank you very much. Now we need to move on to... Many thanks. Have a pleasant evening. I was actually going to say about, I don't know if you're familiar with the app that's available, which I use, which is fantastic for fly tipping. You take a picture, it logs the position, it works out the correct, well, the correct local authority, it forwards all the details, and usually West Devon Borough Council snap to and get it sorted, whether it would actually work out who owns the land, in this case, I don't know. Anyway, so we move on to item five, which is an item requiring a decision, and it's on general finance, the schedule of payments, which you have had, well, you are available on the website, I don't know whether you've looked at this list, it's quite a lengthy piece of work, and I invite you to ask any questions or make any points if you'd like to, please. And now we have the budget monitoring report, which was enclosed with your council papers. Are there any questions, thoughts, comments on that, please? So I think we now move on to a decision on that, and basically I think it's just a matter of whether we want to adopt those and accept them or not. So may I have a proposal, proposer, please, to adopt those, a secondor? So we've got councillor Ewings proposed, councillor Harton to second, those in favour, please. Good, and I'll ask my colleague to talk about the last Budget and Policy Committee which was held on 22nd of July, please, if you would.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise to present the minutes of the Budget and Policy Committee held on the 22nd of July. Eighty-three, apologies for absence. Eighty-four, confirmation of minutes. Eighty-five, declarations of interest. Eighty-six, local government reorganisation and devolution.
So...
Eight, oh, sorry, part of that minute was that there was to be a presence by Devon County Council in the Pania Market, which happened to be on the square, and I took one of their consultation leaflets, which I think the town clerk has copied and is available to members should they wish to complete them about it, and also to remind people that, remind people there is going to be an opportunity on the 1st of September to meet with West Devon Borough Council in the town hall at 6.15.
See, that's on line two, I guess, isn't it, please? Shall I say a recommendation, no, don't we?
Item eighty-seven, signage. It was recommended that Tavestock Town Council respond, confirming its support in principle for the initiative led by the Chamber of Commerce to secure tourist signage from the A30 for the town. I think the mayor wanted to speak on this.
Yes, if I may, thanks councillor Johnson. If you're not aware, this is a small group that is coalescing, I suppose is better than saying being formed, of which I'm a member, basically involves various people from around town. It was originally kind of pushed by the Chamber of Commerce, but the bids involved as well. And the idea really is that, although this has been tried before, but as a tourist destination, we're concerned that there's not enough visibility of Tavestock as a tourist, as a tourist destination from the main roads, and although we're initially talking about the possibility of having brown signs erected on the A30 in various places, it has been suggested the A38 would be similarly a good place to do this. There are lots of things to be considered, it has to be said however, that initial investigations suggest that our status as a world heritage site gives us a massive advantage in this respect, and things have moved on since this was last tried. So I think we tick a lot of the boxes, there is inevitably the question of funding, which is going to be something that we will have to work very, very hard on. Basically, the cost has to be met by the nominator in full. So that's the background behind it. The group that has formed is simply asking town council to state support for the project at this stage. So perhaps that is in fact a recommendation, as you can see, so I'd like a proposer for that, please, if I may. Thank you councillor Smith, and a secondor councillor, Mrs Moody, thank you, all those in favour?
Carrie.
Thank you. Oh, do you... I didn't ask if you...
I wish to make comments in debate.
Please do, I'm terribly sorry that I...
You forgot that bit.
Nissed you up.
I'd just like to say that I do agree that we need this, and we have tried it, as we discussed last week. I'm just wary about the costs, and the cost that could be asked of this council when we don't have a free-flowing budget, and I don't think there's anybody in local government at the moment that has money to spare, I think we're all busy peeling grapes to go forward with our budgets, so I think I wouldn't want to raise anybody's hopes that the town council is going to divvy up to pay for it.
I fully take your point, and it's a very good one. I think the initial approach would be to look for funding, national funding at least, and then possibly even go to the public, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. I take your point, and I would stress that the recommendation that we have actually voted for, but I think everybody's happy with that, is as stated in the minutes here, that the town council simply supports in principle the initiative. We're not talking funds at this stage, thank you. So I think we can assume that that is passed, thank you very much. And I do apologise for not giving you the opportunity to speak.
Item eighty-eight, items circulated for information only, other meetings, little A, Heritage Alliance Group, little B, Goose Fair Operational Meeting, eighty-nine, Tavestock Town Council Vacancy North Ward, ninety, remote attendance and proxy voting, then urgent matters brought forward at the discretion of the chairman, ninety-one, the Devon Association of Local Councils AGM and Conference, which is covered off in the Assistant to the Town Clerk's report later on, and that's it at the moment, thank you.
So part two issues will be dealt with when we sweep up the rest of the part two, part of this meeting. So moving on to item seven, and I'd ask councillor Smith, please, to tell us about the one, I think in this occasion, meeting of the DMNL committee.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise to present the minutes for the Development Management and Licensing Committee on Tuesday the 15th of July. Seventy-four, apologies for absence. Seventy-five, confirmation of minutes. Seventy-six, declarations of interest. And seventy-seven, Dartmoor National Park Authority. There was a planning application on this which involved the construction of some new industrial buildings and developments of an existing industrial buildings at Pitts Cleve, to which we put through a note to the park to say that we support the application on there. Town planning issues on there, that was regarding the LCWIP, or LCWhip as everyone calls it, on that side, and the committee considered the associated papers and recommended that the Tavestock Town Council requested that, it is included in all its consultations with regard to this initiative, and while accepting it, that the safety of bike riders and pedestrians is in the most utmost importance, ensure that this was balanced against the fact that Tavestock was a UNESCO World Heritage Site. Concerns were raised with regard to the widening of the pavements, in particular to the sites below, and the introduction of bike lanes where the area was also occupied by pedestrians, priority being given to the following areas, Brook Street, West Street and Dew Street. Seventy-nine, general correspondence. Eighty, urgent business brought forward at the discretion of the chairman. Planning applications, little A, planning decisions, little B, the, little B, new planning applications, and it is recommended that the views of the town councils listed in Appendix B be passed to the local authority for consideration, that's it, I move that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, I think probably in view of the fact that we have this extra recommendation on item seventy-eight, we take that separately, so I'm assuming that you're proposing that, perhaps somebody will second that, or in fact debate that if they wish to, that recommendation on seventy-eight. Are there any thoughts on that? This is the response to the LCWhip paper. In that case, may I have a secondor for that recommendation? Councillor Johnson, all those in favour, please? Thank you. And for item eighty-one, the new planning applications and the recommendations made by the DMNL committee. I'm assuming councillor Smith will propose that?
I do propose that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, and a secondor, please, or are there any debates? No, thank you. Those in favour? Thank you very much.
The last item is the next meeting, to which you're all welcome on Tuesday the 5th of August, which is next week, so, and your week accordingly, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do come along, they're fun, DMNL, it's great fun. You have to do what councillor Smith does and go and do a personal tour, I'm very impressed, going, peeping over hedges and looking at applications.
Don't make a suggestion like that, that'd be not good.
Right, let's move on. So we now move to major developments, which is surrounding, involving a paper that the town clerk has circulated today, I think, perhaps you'd like to take that, please, Clark?
Yes, members will have seen that it was tabled on the agenda for the meeting, and certainly members of the DMNL committee will recall a conversation which took place when Ms Houselander visited from the local planning authority, and there was a discussion around arrangements that could appropriately be introduced by way of safeguards and accountability and transparency for pre-application meetings. Historically, this isn't something, I should say, pre-application meetings for major developments. Historically, this isn't something which the council has particularly done, but there has been a change in emphasis from government and from other sources in recent years, which makes something which historically was seen as being slightly problematic from a procedural and probity point of view, to being more welcome now. What you have before you is a list of items in paragraph 2.4 on page two, which go from item Roman little 1 to Roman 13. I had a conversation with the head of planning and the director of regulatory services of the local planning authority this afternoon, and so my apologies, that's the reason you haven't had this before, but because that was a scheduled meeting, they are comfortable with the content of this. It is consistent with both what you've discussed beforehand, I hope, it is also consistent with what good practice is in this area. The one thing which you will note in the report which is missing in relation to the conversation we had with Ms Houselander when she was here, was at that stage there was a request that a officer of the local planning authority would be able to attend at these meetings and provide a planning context, if you like, in relation to the joint local plan, national planning policy framework, neighbourhood development plan, so that you, if you like, had a baseline from which to understand the presentation that would be made to you. But for understandable reasons, both of capacity and probity, that's not something the local planning authority is able to do. If you are broadly comfortable with what there is here, but you may not, there may be things you wish to do, the one thing I would particularly invite you to express your view on is there is an indication, can't remember which one it's in, which is, sorry, on item little five, that presentations should typically not exceed 15 minutes. Now, you can make that what you like, I think I would suggest from long years of experience in terms of site meetings and such things, you probably don't want to make it more than 20 minutes or so, because this is about a developer coming, saying, this is what we're thinking of doing and how, so this is the length of the presentation, not the length of the Q and A session that follows on from it. I'm not precious about it, but do you have a figure in mind, whether that's 10, 15, 20 minutes, or something else as the case may be, which as a council, if you are comfortable with the overall approach, and you may wish to comment on that, that you would feel is appropriate in the circumstances? Otherwise, I'd have to take any questions, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I will just add a rider to that, if I may. If any of you are wondering where the Cavanagh Homes request is, the paper refers to actually using this as a pilot, if you like, possibly, for the existing request from Cavanagh Homes, that is in fact, as I understand it, the proposal to develop some land opposite the Emden Grange development, the top of Butcher Park Hill, I believe. Anyway. Councillor, yes councillor Ward, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. During the 10 years or so that I've been on this council, we have on a number of occasions received pre-application presentations from developers, and we have proceeded pretty much along the lines that the clerk has set out here, and I personally have no problems with any of them. Time period, 15 to 20 minutes, sounds absolutely... to twenty minutes, sounds absolutely fine. These are usually taken prior to a meeting of DMNL, and for everybody's sanity, we don't want to be around the table longer than is necessary. So if we said something in the order of thirty minutes, uh, to include Q and A, that would strike me as being in the right ballpark. The thing I just wanted to pick up though, was, uh, item, uh, Roman one, um, major developments classified here as thirty residential units. My understanding was that town council some time ago decided that ten or more was the definition of, uh, a major development. And maybe my memory's failing me, although if it is, councillor Ewings is failing as well, um, or maybe it's changed, I don't know. But my understanding, we were talking about ten properties. Thank you.
Do you want to cover that? Thanks.
Certainly the threshold in the Joint Local Plan is ten properties, so the, um, so the local planning authority use ten. Um, I might be wrong. My understanding was we actually went for a, a higher threshold at that time. But there's no reason why you can't regu, um, bring it in line if you wish to with ten. Obviously, ten is quite a small development, um, but for a town, as opposed to for a village or for a rural settlement. Um, but if, um, if you wish to, then you can make it for the, for the purposes of this, irrespective of what we otherwise classify, whether it is thirty or ten is irrelevant, for the purpose of this policy, if you wish to make it ten, you can do so.
Please.
Uh, thank you. If I could just come back on that, my recollection is that when we agreed on ten properties as being the definition of a major development, it was in the context of DMNL having to refer to full council for ratification of any recommendation.
Splendid. So any other, councillor Hutton, yeah?
Uh, yeah, I'm also, I think this is excellent. I think it's absolutely fine. Uh, the more we can get in very early on and give some views and some feedback to developers, the better. One thing that's slightly worrying me now though, for the last two or three years with neighbourhood plans and that, we've been told constantly, we don't need to worry about new building areas because we've got a, a supplier where we know where they're going to go. And suddenly, we're now thinking about things like this in case people come through with new developments, which we know they're going to come. Is it not something we need to rethink about whether this council needs to give? And I gather we can do it in the neighbourhood plan, we can put in some way, I don't, we can put some sort of amendments to the neighbourhood plan, basically going along the line, this is what Tavistock, where we want to build and where we don't want to build. Because I understand that at present, developers can come and pretty well try where they want. And I just think, we know now, developers are coming, this is why we're doing documents like this. Do we need to be moving this forward actually and thinking a bit further down the line?
Well, as I understand it, this is to address pre-application, so it's at the very beginning of the process. Uh, so I think, I don't think we can second guess the developers to any greater extent than that.
So we're just going to let them all come with their applications and their pre-applications, and we're, we're, we're not going to said, you can't development, or you can't build here, or we'd rather you didn't build here, which is what we all hoped the neighbourhood plan would be doing, but we were told it wasn't necessary, which in good faith, we all went along with.
Like, like you, Andy, I'm at the edge of my sphere of knowledge here, so I'm going to ask town clerk to address your question.
Oh dear. Um, thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I think the difficulty is, Tavistock finds itself in the same situation as probably almost every equivalent town across the west country. Um, government changes to its, to its approach to the planning framework mean that almost no councils in the west country principal authorities have, have now got a sustainable five-year land supply. And in those circumstances, there is a considerable level of uncertainty in terms of each individual local plan, in our case, the joint local plan with Plymouth and South Hams, as to how developers may seek to circumvent the fact that there isn't a five-year land supply and something which is called the tilted balance, which effectively gives additional opportunities to developers to develop land might actually play out. Uh, the Borough Council are in the process of looking at the joint local plan, and they are, as I understand it, developing proposals for a new local plan, and I'm, I'm not quite sure of the format for that, but there is a new local plan which is going to be developed. And that, of course, is the senior plan, relative to the neighbourhood development plan. So your priority or your order of hierarchy is national planning policy framework, in that current case, joint local plan, albeit somewhat superseded in, in certain elements, and then your neighbourhood development plan. The difficulty that you've got with the neighbourhood development plan is that it is required to be in conformity with both the national planning policy framework and the joint local plan. You've got a joint local plan which is going to be under review at the point that that is, that is now out of date in certain respects because of the changes by government. At the point that is agreed, then the neighbourhood development plan, so far as it is inconsistent with the new joint local plan, will be out of date. Whether or not there are things that can be done is a matter which the DMNL Committee is going to have to consider, um, in the light of where things are. I think the difficulty is some of the suggestions which so far have come forward are around things like the introduction of a boundary for the built development of the town. But I think certainly from the conversations I've had with the planners at West Devon, the difficulty with approaches like that is that it might be quite easy for a developer to argue, well, if you just go for a built development boundary without actually making site allocations, then you are restrictive. You're never going to get the number of houses in that you possibly could. So a developer can argue that it's unreasonable and therefore it falls by the wayside. The flip side is if you then seek to make allocations, you have, uh, you have a extensive process that you're going to have to go through. It is not a simple process. You will need to look at the resources and the capacity that there is to do that, and make no mistake about it, when you are dealing with potentially large-scale, very well-resourced developers, that is both difficult in resource terms, but also in terms of community, and how you actually marry the objecting, the supporting views, and how you pull those things together. And it's not a quick process. But that's a matter of a DMNL committee to consider should it wish to do so in due course, and make recommendations to council. I think the key thing I would say about the neighbourhood development plan is, we have a plan, we have a plan which has been assessed by an examiner as good, we have a plan which has been assessed by the local planning authority as being good. It may not cover all the contingencies in the change world in which we are, but we do have a good plan, and I think that's something which we probably should, and we, as we have already in the past, recognise.
Um, councillor Mrs Moody, please.
Mr Mayor, um, I, in my ignorance, I, I mean, obviously, there's an awful lot of planning I don't really understand. But I do remember when we were discussing the neighbourhood plan and the, the, the boundary, the ba, the, this boundary around Tavistock, which I remember voting for, um, and it was voted through in the end, that, uh, we weren't going to have a boundary. There is still, I think it's something that we should revisit seriously, um, particularly because of all the, um, potential problems that could happen. And, um, obviously, Geoff and, and Graham Parker are not here, so they, they obviously , um, understand it all. But I, I feel that Tavistock desperately needs as much as it can be, to be protected properly. And I believe that it, it also involves, um, outside the boundary, they can, they can build a certain way, and it may not be the, a good, good for Tavistock. Um, so perhaps we should revisit it and try and understand a little bit more in depth. I mean, Oakhampton have a, um, a settlement boundary, and I can't understand why we haven't got one.
Um, thank you. Can I just say that, um, the, if, if you look at the, um, and thanks for your comments, but if you look at what's being proposed here, it doesn't really address, you know, the, settlement boundaries are obviously an important and debatable point, but it doesn't really touch on what we are considering here. This is simply, as I understand it, an opportunity for the Development, uh, Management and Licensing Committee, and any other members, to, uh, be appraised by a developer, developer of their plans, nothing more and nothing less than that. I would point out, in case you haven't spotted it, that there is, uh, an opportunity, there is a, a clause that will allow public attendance as well. So, you know, there is that possibility that the public will see this as, um, a public consultation, which it's not. That's quite important. So as I understand it, and I look to the, uh, for nothing more than a nod from the town clerk really here, that, um, the public would be allowed to observe, either in person or online, but not contribute in any way. Correct. So that's what we're really addressing here. Andy, I think you have a point.
Yes, I, I just, when is the joint local plan to be reviewed? Uh, is that something in the next few months, next year?
I think councillor Ewings has that very piece.
Right, so in other words, we're not going to be using an old plan for very, much longer.
Um, the, um, new joint local plan will be with South Hams, um, district council. It needs to be started as quickly as possible because there is no five-year land supply. Um, the town clerk said in the county, I think it's pretty much the country, there's only a couple of really urban areas where their council numbers were redu, um, building numbers were reduced. Most of us have really high increases. Within the new joint local plan, we have set up the exec board of how it's going to work. So it will be the leaders of West Devon and South Hams, the, uh, cabinet hub members for the built environment, and, um, who's the third? Caroline? There is a third, I have to think. And then there is a working group that is formed of members, and that is led for both authorities by the respective chairs of the, um, uh, DML Committee itself. So they will do a lot of the work there. Ours has been set up, that I think it's due to start work in September, October time. We then have only thirty months to get the whole thing through. The government has set a timetable, and, um, you have to comply with that. Within doing this work, we may be able to get our housing numbers reduced, because they've not taken into account Dartmoor National Park, uh, being part of a world heritage site, uh, being part of the natural landscape, which is the old A O M B. Um, so there's a lot of things, um, and we've got sites of scientific interest and things like that. So they can in turn reduce the numbers, but you have to have gone through the process that we're about to start again to be able to get those numbers reduced.
But it still takes thirty months, over thirty minutes. We're on the old Yeah. system that we know is not fit for purpose.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's really, really, really helpful clarification. But I'm, uh, I'm, I'm really quite eager to keep our focus on this proposal, um, as a tool, if you like, to help us, uh, assess, um, pre-applications as they come through. So what I'm, unless we have any other, um, comments, I just want to say, really, what we're looking at here are the thr, the thirteen, uh, sub paragraphs of paragraph two point three, on which we need to decide. That's the, that's the recommendation, that's the proposal, with the, um, exception that we are now going to change, um, part, uh, sub paragraph, some par, sub paragraph one to ten residences. And, uh, I think we need to decide whether we're going to go fifteen minutes or twenty probably, uh, in terms of allowing, uh, a developer to make a, a proposal.
I think the proposal was fifteen to twenty minutes.
Fifteen to twenty.
Thirty minutes max.
Good. So, well, if we can go for fifteen to twenty minutes with thirty minutes maximum, ten units, are there any other changes that anybody would like to see made to these clauses? Good. In that case, may I have a proposal for, to, to adopt this? Councillor Poppy, thank you. And I think councillor Hutton was very keen to second that too. Those in favour, please. Thank you.
Harry.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank, um, town clerk for his work on this, um, which I think was done fairly rapidly. And, um, it's, it's a good, it's a good summary that we can all get our head round, which is great. So, moving on to, um,
Nine.
Yeah, nine, thank you very much. So we have items circulated for information only. We'll start with the General Manager's Report, which, uh, you should have received in the post, little stern of the rest. Are there any questions on that, please? Comments? Nope. Good. Thank you. Uh, and then we have one from the Panayam Market, the, uh, Reeve. Any questions on that? Questions, queries, thoughts? I did say, um, it's interesting to see all the wonderful plaudits that are coming our way. Sometimes I wonder if I'd like to have a look at some of the others. Do, do we have any bad ones? I don't know. But, um, right, we work, we move on to Works Department. One of the things I would say about the Works Department, uh, in my recent experiences, I don't know if anybody else took the opportunity to go and do a bit of siding. I did some siding in the cemetery with the, the Works team last week, I think it was. It was absolutely fascinating. It happened to be a lovely day, and, um, doing a bit of siding in a meadow is really, really pleasant and relaxing. Absolutely, uh, recommend it, and I'd like to commend our Works Team for their enthusiasm. They were really, really getting stuck into this, and it's a great thing to do. Are there any other thoughts on that Works Department report? No, thank you. And we have Town Hall and Butchers Hall report also. Councillor Hutton.
I'd just like to say on the Town Hall, it does, it is pleasing to see that we're really getting the feeling now the Town Hall is being used for things, that more and more weddings and events are coming through, and we're using that lovely asset we've got. Uh, and I think that really is a great thing to be said.
I, I completely agree. I think there's nothing more pleasing than driving through town and seeing people dressed up and having been to a wedding and spilling out onto Bedford Square, and obviously using our, as you say, using our great facility that is our Town Hall. Any other comments, please? Councillor Ward.
Uh, thank you. Um, I've made this comment before, and I'm going to make it again. I really would like to see some numbers in this report, just following on from what councillor Hutton has said, um, about the Town Hall being used more. Um, where's the evidence?
Yeah, I think the, uh, General Manager probably is listening to it and noting. Don't think we need to say any more than that, and you have, you have made that point before, and I agree. Anything else? No, good. So service reports complete. We move on to item ten, finance and other matters. Uh, so we have, first of all, uh, the report from the Assistant to the Town Clerk, which you have in front of you. Would you like to say anything about that, Jan, or are you happy with it?
Um, just to remind everybody that there is a VJ Day, um, service at the War Memorial at eleven o'clock on Friday the fifteenth of August, where the mayor will be laying wreath. And as mentioned earlier, if I can draw your attention to the Dalke Conference and AGM on Wednesday the first of October at Extra Racecourse. If this is something you would like to attend, please can you contact me in order that I can book you a place? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions, comments on that particular piece of work? So, uh, ten bravo. Uh, we are, um, free. Uh, honoured to have the presence of councillor Reed from West Devon Borough Council, who's been sitting very patiently at the back of the room here. Um, and he has given us a very, in my opinion, a very thorough and interesting report of what's going on up at Kilwoodie Park. Um, and I did take the liberty, if you remember, of circulating that earlier, because I thought it was a particularly good example of, um, uh, inter-council cooperation, shall I say. So, you know, it, I, I found it thoroughly informative, certainly compared to the ones that I wrote when I was up there. So, thank you very much, Graham. Um, does anybody have any questions on that? Or thoughts? I don't know whether you want to elucidate, Graham, if you have anything else you ought to say.
First of all, just to thank you for the invitation.
Yes, can you put the microphone on, please, Graham? Um, just press the little voicey face, and it'll go red, and then we can all hear you. That's it.
We don't have anything good of that in the chambers up the hill.
I remember.
We just have them different. Well, yes, first of all, thank you for the invitation. Um, as one of the three councillors for the north Tavistock ward, I take my duties very seriously. A little bit of background about myself, I retired down to Beher Elson in twenty thirteen with my wife. Um, I'm a skilled
Um, I'm a skilled craftsman, and I've been practising my trade on an instrumented basis since I've moved here. Uh, I'm fairly heavily involved in a number of charitable activities locally. I chair the board of the Weirkey Hub Club, and it's our AGM tomorrow. I'm involved with, um, Mount Kelly Coral, when I was chairman for a while, and, uh, we think that's very much part of Tavistock's artistic, um, arrangements, and to be thoroughly supported, and a, a number of other activities, which we're sure, sure, dwell on. Um, I've brought through some, um, business cards, I'll leave on the table, so you can take away from my personal details. I know you've all been involved in hearing about the Devon, um, local government reorganisation, but there are some cards here that you may want to take and pass on for those who want to queue, reach them. As regards, um, some of the issues, um, I think that, um, when I, when I was first elected, I went out with councillor Moody, who is also a personal friend, and he, as fellow North Tavvy councillor, took me on a whistle-top store, a whistle-stop tour around Tavistock, and he brought out something which I hadn't really, really honestly thought about, the fact Tavistock is an excellent tourist destination. And he was so right, and I'm very pleased to hear this evening, that you have matters in hand regards that, because that is very important. Um, shouting about it is the best thing we can do, it's a great idea. Uh, I, I would like to see more, um, engagement with the community from both this and borough council levels, in terms of providing better facilities, and I think mainly about arts and entertainment, but as yet, I'm not sufficiently knowledgeable enough to understand and make recommendations. But it's something which I think is important, because as part of a tourist destination, providing quality entertainment is a first-class activity. We are so lucky to have things like the Edge and other activities, organisation which, in which I've also participated. Uh, any of the other questions, please? Otherwise, um, like myself and the other councillors, I'm always available to take inquiries from both you as councillors, and also from the public that you represent. Thank you very much.
I th-, thank you, Graham. It's, um, um, it's, it's good to see you here, and as I said, anything that strengthens the bonds between the town council and West Devon Borough Council, and indeed, the county council, are very, very welcome. One thing I didn't actually mention, sorry, I'm going to just throw this in, because I think it's relevant, and it might make you smile. Um, the whole campaign about the, or the whole idea of the brown signs was largely kicked off by the fact that somebody, not very far from here, pointed out the fact that there are loads and loads of sound, signs within Tavistock directing people elsewhere. Morewell Ham, Buckland Abbey, Dingles Fairground, et cetera, there are none showing the way in. Right, I'm going to leave that as it is. So thank you very much, Graham. Um, you may stay by all means, but, um, we're going to ask you to leave very shortly for part two, I'm afraid.
Okay, well, if you're having a party, and I understand that process, as an ex-councillor, the parish government.
You're, as I said, you're welcome to stay for another, I don't know, a couple of minutes probably.
It's October, the state one.
Right, um, moving on, thank you very much. Uh, moving on, we have ten B, ten Bravo, which is, no, that's you, ten Charlie one. So, uh, anybody has, uh, any, does anybody have any updates or questions, um, about the, does anybody have any updates, I'm sorry, uh, about the bodies, outside bodies that they serve on, that they would like to share with us, please? Do you want to talk about, right? Please, um, please do, you know, consider this as being an opportunity to, to get messages out there, if you're working with somebody else, that you think, uh, we would benefit from, from messages from them. Thanks, Graham. Um, so feedback from members following attendance at training sessions, I think, Robert, you're the only one that's actually done any recently, I don't know if you have anything you want to say about it?
No.
Yeah? Okay. Okay? I just spotted your, your, your name in lights there somewhere. Good. Um, and so now, um, we move, uh, no, sorry, we're to receive such communications as reports as may be submitted to the town mayor, of which there are none, and neither are there urgent matters brought forward at the discretion of the town mayor, so please, Mandy.
Move to part two, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Um, suppose we ought to second that?
Second.
Thank you. All right.